Let the January 2021 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the states of America and to the Republic.
Which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Good evening. Madam Mayor, would you give us the list of deceased residents for the month of December?
Yes, let's take a moment of silence for our deceased residents for the month of December 2020. Donald Logan. Dorothy Rohanna. Cynthia Sykes. Ernest Purcell. John Howitt. Barbara Kearney. Dolores O'Malley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Wilworth, would you give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Heller. Mrs. Fuchs. Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Vasquez.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy.
Present.
Mr. Papas.
Present.
Ms. Swicki.
Here.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
I believe I heard you say Mrs. Boils on the, on there.
Joan is on, yes.
And Mr. Wilworth. Everyone is here.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Ford, will you give us the school board report, please?
Absolutely. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. We made it to 2021, right? Thank you. First, I would like to start by thanking the Brookhaven Borough and all who contributed to four Coburn families, Coburn Elementary families for Christmas. The families are so grateful for all that you do each year and thankful to have Christmas for their children and so thankful this year. And thank you to Mayor Leslie for coordinating everything with the Coburn Elementary School Counselor. We're also grateful for your support. In December, Coburn Elementary students participated in online winter concert, chorus and band. If you didn't have an opportunity, check it out on the website, please do so. Online holiday shop, we had a Zoom sing-along after the, I'm sorry, before the break. I'm just trying to keep, you know, things moving along as much as we can. Most of it obviously is online, but the children absolutely enjoyed everything that we did in December. The Pendelco School District did reopen today. Today and tomorrow, all of our students are virtual. And then Wednesday is our typical virtual day within our standard schedule. Pendelco is back to hybrid in-person on Thursday, January 7th for Cohort A and Friday, January 8th for Cohort B. An erroneous headline came out the day after our last meeting regarding our, our break. The Delaware County Times ran a news headline that read Pendelco to take a short, all-virtual pause to evaluate outbreak. Well, just to be very clear, there was no outbreak in Pendelco. We were closed for two days, coming back today and tomorrow, and we're right back to our in-person hybrid schedule. While the region continues to struggle with positivity cases, total known positive cases in each of our schools remains less than 1% for staff and students. And also, in a previous update, I discussed the new state order that would require schools to revert to all virtual learning should a school hit a minimum threshold of positive cases. We've been able to successfully do that. Again, that threshold is two students. And so that has happened, but we're able to close clean because we have such a comprehensive cleaning and safety plan. We're able to do it in a day and get the schools back open again. The data used to account for the threshold is posted on the district COVID data dashboard. So if you're interested in that data, it can be found on the Pendelco School District webpage. And it's there in an effort to certainly increase transparency and quick communication for families and staff. Our students and staff continue to work very hard and demonstrate resilience throughout this incredibly challenging year. And our families continue to be extremely supportive. We're looking forward to a positive year ahead in 2021. And that concludes the school report. Does anybody have any questions for me about any of our COVID situations or safety? If not, thank you and Happy New Year, and I'll see everyone at the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Thanks for my work.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Chief Zebby.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the month of December, the Brookhaven Police were assigned 462 cat assignments through DOT COM. The more noteworthy incidences, incidents are listed below. One for armed robbery at our Walgreens. That ended up with two arrests when the case is still under investigation. The FBI is involved. And I can't comment much more on it because it's still under investigation, but there will be commendations issued for the two officers involved. There were three assault incidents with three arrests, three death investigations, 12 theft incidents, five were retail thefts, two fraud reports, one criminal mischief report, four harassment complaints, one terroristic threat, one narcotics complaint, three arrests for DUIs during the month of December. Two public intoxications, one disordered person. Nineteen suspicious conditions or persons were investigated for December. Brookhaven Police also responded to and resolved 30 disturbances or domestic disputes. We investigated 11 alarms. We also responded to 25 hazardous condition or fire company calls. Nineteen vehicle accidents were taken during the month of December, and we assisted 19 times for other outside agencies. In total, 14 adults were arrested, 17 citations were issued or filed, five warnings were issued. Total lost two victims amounts to approximately $7,681. Recovered property amounts are approximately $1,111. In December, there was one officer out for quarantine for COVID-19. Stringent COVID mitigation plan and order remains in effect. One personnel issue was addressed in December. For hiring of new officers, background is completed for one remaining applicant and a conditional offer was made pending further testing. Candidate, the candidate qualified at the range for duty weapon and is expected to be sworn in and begin training in January this month. Two other applicants were in the background phase when they both withdrew due to full-time job offers elsewhere. Resume is now being accepted and advertising for part-time officer will begin for more applicants. We also had Officer Tia Philak resign as a probationary part-time police officer from the Brookhaven Police Department for training for the month of December. Also, wet and conducted firearms training and qualifications at the firearms range. Also, wet and also attended eight hours of training with SWAT. Also, Subers and myself attended field training also are now, are, we are now RFTO certified. Detective Havik attended eight hours at the District Attorney's Office relevant, for training relevant to child abuse and child exploitation. Officers also completed, the remaining officers completed Act 18 Service Training. And then, of course, de-escalation training and other trainings are being pushed back because of COVID. In total, for December, 136 main hours of training was received by officers. And also, our beanbag rounds have arrived, as I spoke before about the shotguns with the extra layer of less-than-lethal-force options. The rounds have arrived. We're just going to wait for firearms range date to be available. The range had to close for maintenance and upgrading at the Delaware County Emergency Service Training Center, and we don't expect them to open until February. And lastly, the Brookhaven Police Department is grateful for the outpouring of gratitude and well wishes during the holiday season from the community, members of the community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Chief Montell.
Good evening, Council, Council President. Brookhaven Fire Company's monthly fire report for December 2020 and also our yearly totals will be included. In the month of December, we had four fire incidents in the borough. For the year, we had 35 incidents in the borough involving fire, 18 non-fire. Throughout the year, we had 245 non-fire incidents, 30 calls for mutual aid, 332 calls for the year, four drills for the month, 49 for the year, total of 56 fire and rescue calls during the month of December, 661 fire rescue calls for the year. Our property loss for the month was zero, loss on contents was also zero. For the year, we had $33,000 loss on structure, $30,000 loss on contents, for a total of $63,000 in loss in the borough. We had $1,050,000 of property endangered. We have one firefighter injury in the month, two for the year, and one civilian injury for the year. Our manpower was 56 calls, 16 average firefighters, 672 hours for the month, for the year, personnel hours, 7,437 hours. Our training was four training sessions for the month of December, averaged 27 firefighters, 216 hours of training for the month of December, 2,630 hours of training for the year. Incidents in Brookhaven Borough for the month, two building fires, one at 8 West Brookhaven Road and one at 280 Bridgewater Road at Tremble Run Condos F Building. We had accidents at, two accidents, one at 3400 Block Edgemont and one at 352 Edwards Drive. One gas leak at 280 Bridgewater Tremble Run H Building. Assisted Chester Township Fire Department on two building fires, one at 3704 Powell, the other one at 1247 Elson. Assisted Upland Fire Company on an accident at Upland Avenue and Curlin Street. We assisted Parkside Fire Company on a building fire at 12 West Shelton Road and an accident at 352 and Elbon Road. Assisted Middletown Fire Company on a building fire at 7 Brynmore Place. Assisted Rocky Run Fire Company on a second alarm building fire Christmas morning at Rampart East Drive. And our monthly training was hose line advancement ladder and truck company operations. We also provided COVID-19 updated reports were submitted to council and the mayor. We are experiencing a steady transporting of positive COVID patients. And we submitted, Brookhaven Fire Company submitted active fire and EMS personnel roster to Crozier Hospital for COVID-19 vaccinations. Dates for this personnel to be vaccinated are still unknown at this current time. So we're still waiting for that. Our EMS report for the month of December and the yearly report, we had 205 ambulance calls in the month of December. We transported 120 people to the hospital. We had 132 ALS dispatches and 73 BLS dispatches in the month of December. Our total calls for the year, 1,805 ambulance calls. We transported 1,137 people to the hospital. And for the year, we had 1,059 ALS dispatches and 774 BLS dispatches. And that'll conclude our report for the fire company and ambulance for the month and the year. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone for a public discussion?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Maureen Baile, B-A-I-L, 3512 Williamson Avenue, Brookhaven. Well, obviously.
Good evening.
Hi. I had some questions regarding the development on Edgemont Avenue behind, the one behind KFC and Wendy's.
Sure.
I left, I left a message on 1210 for hopefully the inspector to call me, and I left another message two weeks ago. And I haven't heard back, so I figured I would call in tonight to hopefully get some answers. I found plans online. I don't know if they're still accurate, but they pretty much match what y'all had approved many years ago. But I had some questions about the construction fence that they put up behind our properties on Williamson Avenue. It looked like from the plans, both many years ago and what's online, that it should be at 20 feet before they start to drive, before they're parking, and it's like 80 feet to the building. But the construction fence is only basically a few feet behind our properties. And I don't see any landscaping on the plans that I found online. I just, I need to confirm with somebody that there is going to indeed be some landscaping and they're not going to cut up that entire area within that quote-unquote buffer zone.
Okay.
And the third point is, the plans that I found online, it looks like there's a dumpster basically against our property within the buffer zone. And I question that because I didn't think anything would be in that area.
Charles, what say you?
Say again?
Mr. Catania, what do you say?
I think the best thing to do would be to have the, set of the plans available at Borough Hall for review. Instead of, if we make sure we're looking at the right plans, I'm unaware of what's online and what is actually what was set of the approved plans.
Where I found it was under the residence at the Brookhaven Glen, so it was the newest one that's under Caldwell Banker's site.
Well, I'll get, I'll get with John Wilworth and we'll get a set of the approved plans available for, for you to review at the Borough Hall. Or we'll get a copy to you, maybe the better way since kind of still on the COVID protocol.
Well, that's what my question, yeah, how I would access that because I know it can't come into borough. And how could I follow, or with whom could I follow up?
I would suggest that, that maybe tomorrow, give a call to the Borough Office and talk to John Wilworth. He'll get your contact information. And then we can make arrangements to get in touch with you with the, with the information you're asking.
Okay. Obviously, my big concern is the dumpster that's within that 20-foot area. And also, if they cut up within just a foot or two of the back fence, what drainage issues are anything going to be and obviously landscaping, because we're one of the few properties that have no trees in that area, so we're totally exposed.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilworth, what's your, what's your extension for Ms. Baile?
Four, 144.
One, it's, Mr. Wilworth's extension is 144, Mrs. Baile.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
That would be it.
Thank you. We'll definitely follow up with you. Is there anyone else for a public discussion?
Yes, sorry, Keith Globacki on 4941 Chester Creek Road.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, over to, I guess, the last six months or so, we've been getting some flooding down here on Creek Road. We had a phone call back in August with Steve Schultz and FEMA. They were supposed to be working on some ways to get our flood insurance down and some flood risk mitigation down here. We haven't, I haven't heard anything from anyone about that, and I just wanted to follow up with you guys to see if you guys have heard something about it.
I can, I can tell that I reached out to Mr. Schultz and I spoke to Mr. Catania today. First and foremost, I was told that the communication with FEMA, which is the Pennsylvania Emergency Management that is working on behalf of FEMA, like the communication wasn't exactly all that great. From there on out, I'll hand it over to Charles to briefly explain what, what the situation is down there.
Okay. So I was on that phone call as well, and I think as Mr. Heller had said, if you were on the phone call, you know, the information was, was very disjointed in what we received from FEMA during that phone call. What I took away from it was that the initial look at, there's, the program that they were talking about was a voluntary buyout program. And from what I understand is that in order to qualify for the buyout program, they did a basic cost-benefit analysis of the properties, and I do not believe that individually any of the properties down there qualified for the program. There was discussion that potentially these properties could be joined in with others throughout the county that may reach, meet that threshold. So we may, we may add, try to work with the county, try to work with the county, add properties in other municipalities, lump them all together and put another program into FEMA or FEMA to see if we can get some movement on that front. On the, here's what I recall on that as well, and I haven't seen anything. During that conference call, right after that conference call, Steve Schultz had asked that any resident, any complaint can, claims that they submit the information, he was going to start a Google site in order to be able to download, and I haven't seen any of that, so I don't know if anyone has even followed up with that, and I.
Yeah, I don't have any claims on my home. I think I'm at one of the highest points on the street. Neighbor mine, my house and a neighbor next to me, but the, the creek has been, I mean, over the last three months, I mean, we haven't, I know we've gotten a lot of rain, but I haven't seen it come up this much since I lived here. It came up, I think, three years, three times prior to this year, the whole time I've been living here. So it's been, so it's becoming problematic.
Like, three times this year?
Yes.
Yep. So on the other front would be, would be the insurance rate, and that's through a system they call Community Rating System. And I am aware that Steve has, has been in touch with that organization and has filed, or if not has filed, has prepared the information that was needed in order then to renew the community rating system. What that is, is as you get to different levels on, they call the CRS system, the flood insurance rates go down incrementally as you achieve a new level. So he was trying to get to the next level of the CRS system, and we can follow up with Steve on that. And then on the third front, because I know Mr. Heller has, has, if not has already, was going to make contact with our state representative to try to get FEMA or FEMA, or combination of the two out here to Brookhaven to meet with the residents on Creek Road, so we can have a little bit better conversation than we had on our phone conversation a couple of months ago.
Correct. I am reaching out to Leanne tomorrow.
Okay, that's, yeah, because that call that we had was, I didn't really get anything out of it, and it was just, I think, a total waste of time.
Homes never should have been built there, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Who are we?
No, I agree, and I mean, there are people in this street that pay like five grand a year on flood insurance, for flood insurance.
One, one was paying over 10,000 a year.
Yeah, well, he said he got it down to five.
He was able to get it down, but he was paying, or close to 10.
I think even 2,000 is too much to pay for flood insurance down here. I mean, they were built down here. We were in the lower reserve zone, and all of a sudden, back in 2007, they remapped everything and put us in the flood zone, the AE zone, I guess is where the high school is zone, and they should have kept this grandfathered into the lower reserve, in my opinion, but, you know, I'm not a engineer or anything like that, so.
Well, the Dutton Mansion was up to the second floor in the 1800s, if the story is accurate, so it gives you an idea.
I met someone over the weekend who was down here for the floods in 1971. They said my house, the flood was, the water was over the garage door.
Correct, yeah, yep. So it's happening. It's just happening more frequently now.
Yeah, so I don't want, I don't want it to come down to that point where I lose everything.
Nope. As Charles said to me earlier, it's Bean County, you know, you forget that there's people affected down there.
Yep.
But we are working on it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else, Keith?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. We'll get back to you on it.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. Is there anyone else for a public discussion? Going once, going twice. First public discussion session is closed. Mr. Wills with the solicitor's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone. I had forwarded the solicitor's report to all of council and the mayor earlier this morning. A few salient points that I will raise this evening are as follows. Number one concerns a police personnel matter. We have a full-time police officer who was injured in the line of duty. He's been out on injury now for just about one year. And it appears based on the medical reports we have received that likelihood of him returning to full-time duties as a police officer are fairly slim. As a result, I have spoken earlier today and consulted with the FOP attorney, Skip Miller. And we are in agreement that this officer will in fact be applying for a surface-connected disability pension that probably will be before council at the March 1st monthly meeting. He is also going to be forwarded to be some ancillary medical reports concerning this particular officer. I've also consulted with the police pension consultant, and he will be arriving at various figures as to a proposed pension settlement for this officer as well. So this is something that is coming to fruition, that unfortunately, this officer's injuries are severe and it doesn't appear, appear likelihood, or likely that he will be returning to active full-time service. Second issue concerns the development over there off of Brookhaven Road that is being developed by Pando Properties. This is a development of seven single-family detached residential homes. The developer is in the process of completing this development. As part of the land development plan approval process, he was required to deed a certain amount of open space to the borough for recreational purposes. I'm pleased to report that as of late last week, he had forwarded to my office, and I have reviewed a proposed deed of dedication to lot number eight on this particular land development plan. It appears to be in order. However, I am going to defer on filing that deed of dedication until I receive confirmation from the borough engineer that that particular lot has been properly graded and restored. So once Mr. Catania signs off on the condition of that, that deed of dedication will be filed with the Delaware County Recorder Deeds Office. So that development is coming to an end, and all looks good. Next issue concerned various tax assessment appeal cases that were referred to me quite recently. These are tax assessment appeals regarding the 2021 new tax assessments, and specifically the property at 4417 Edgemont Avenue, more commonly referred to as Tom Jones Restaurant. There are a total of four tax parcels that have been appealed. The restaurant that sits on one parcel is the largest tax assessment appeal case, but we also have two separate and distinct parcels that are basically used as a parking lot. And there's another parcel immediately behind the Tom Jones Restaurant that is a one-and-a-half-story Cape Cod that apparently is used as a commercial space. So the property owner owns all four of those tax parcels. They are all up or a tax assessment appeal. As is tradition here in Delaware County, we generally have the solicitor for the school district that will take the lead in litigating this matter in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. Obviously, the largest tax bill that we receive is generally the school tax bill, so the school district is the largest affected taxing district during these tax assessment appeals. So I'll be working in conjunction with Mike Pupio, the school district solicitor, as we attempt to resolve this case sometime in the year 2021. And again, I will keep our council apprised of this issue. And again, I will keep our council apprised of this issue. And the last matter I'd bring the uh council's attention concerns the a lease uh for the uh State Representative Leanne Kruger. She had been mentioned earlier today. As everyone is aware, the state representative leases uh office space in the Brookhaven Municipal Center uh pursuant to uh a lease dated some years ago. That lease is generally for a two year interval, which generally matches the uh e- election term for the state representative. Obviously, uh Representative Kruger was recently reelected for an additional two year period as a result of the election in November of twenty twenty. Therefore, I will be preparing a new lease extension for both the borough and for Representative Kruger to execute. I did uh hear from uh Council President Heller earlier today and apparently Representative Kruger wants to continue our mutually beneficial relationship, uh which I think certainly is a benefit to the borough and the taxpayers, having the state representative's office there where uh certainly taxpayers and clients of the borough who have state issues involved in Harrisburg can certainly come over and speak with the state representative and her uh the excellent office staff that is there. So uh, we will be uh probably drafting up that new lease amendment as early as tomorrow. I'll try to get it out to President Heller and Representative Kruger so that we can get her re-signed for an additional two year period. Other than that, Mr. President, I can report uh general progress and again, wish everybody a happy, healthy and safe New Year.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I have um two short things for my report. On Christmas Eve, December twenty fourth, I had the honor of uh marrying Sharon Larson and Joseph Greenall. So I want to congratulate them on their marriage and they also donated donated a hundred dollars to the fire department, which I turned over to Chief Montella. And the second thing on my agenda is I'd like to ask council to accept or approve the resignation of our part time officer, Kim Tio Flack, effective December thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Do I have a motion?
I'll take the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. President. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have an executive session to announce. It was held Wednesday, twelve thirty twenty twenty, six thirty to eight o'clock PM. The purpose was interviews for the um zoning officer position. We had a total of three applicants. One had no relevant qualifications, so we we uh denied an interview. We had ended up interviewing two individuals. One individual, ten minutes into the interview, withdrew their application. They thought that it was the uh uh the zoning board position, not the zoning officer position. They sit on the zoning board in neighboring town. So that left us with one applicant, one qualified applicant. So the um, I need a motion to appoint Bill Gavin as Brookhaven Borough's zoning officer at the monthly fee, monthly salary of five hundred dollars per month, which is a bump from what Mr. Hampton was making. Uh, that was at the request of the applicant and we agreed upon.
I'll make the motion.
Despite the heavy breathing, when you have one applicant, uh, that's kind of he's 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 got a, the chips are in his corner. So you have a motion, Mr. Baskets?
Yes.
I'll second it.
It was advertised. Of course, it was advertised. It was also put on Facebook. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any questions?
I I could just say, Mr. President, I have dealt with Mr. Gavin in other municipalities, both as a municipal solicitor and as a private attorney doing development and zoning issues in other municipalities. I can tell you, he is well qualified.
Sure, I was about to get to that. He's qualified. He's uh, he's he's user friendly, easy to deal with. I had a couple of long conversations with him prior to the interview to to see what we were bringing on board and uh so I think he'll do a great job. Harold's a uh, Harold's a big uh big, big person to replace, tough person to replace, I should say. So. And regarding Mr. Hampton, I spoke to a family member of Mr. Hampton over the weekend. They initially made a request to honor Mr. Hampton tonight. Uh, I thought that honoring someone that served the borough so greatly for forty years would would have cheapened the the ceremony. So um, I suggested that we that we postpone that ceremony until we're back in person and the family member agreed, council agreed, so.
It's a good idea, Cherry.
Yeah, and unless we also have Mary and Gary and uh and someone else to honor in person. So there's
Yeah, good idea.
There's a kind of a way. I just don't, I just don't see, see um doing it on Zoom would would just cheapen. That's just my opinion.
You kind of devalue is, it devalue is the person's worth.
Sure, it 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 does, it does. But um, they're not going anywhere. So we will have uh probably get them, get them all in one meeting as soon as we're soon as we're able to have um in person meetings again, which hopefully won't be before long. With that, uh, I need a motion to approve the September twenty twenty council meeting minutes.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Can it?
On? Do I have a second?
I seconded it, yeah.
You go in favor?
Aye.
Right. I need a motion to approve the October twenty twenty council meeting minutes.
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to approve the December twenty twenty council meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And last, I need a motion to approve the December twenty twenty special budget meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All four motions carry. No objections, no questions? All right, motions carry. I have an update on the uh banner. Round four of the Hometown Hero Banners. We are open. I am going to post uh the details on the Brookhaven Hometown Hero Facebook page sometime this week. There is going to be a slight increase in the cost because uh the lack of fundraising due to COVID, mostly. We uh are going to be unable to subsidize the cost of the brackets. So we're going to make it as cheap as possible. You're looking at one fifteen hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty five dollars, something like that. Um, it's the best we can do. For anyone that prepaid, there there were some individuals that prepaid. We're just going to have to let them go and and give them the uh seventy eight dollar cost. We uh, this is the last round for the Hometown Hero Banners. The the maintenance for our public works is is straining. We have two hundred and twenty seven banners. I expect around fifty more. Um, it doesn't mean that you're not going to be able to get a a banner down the road. Uh, we don't expect everyone to replace their banner once, once they fall into disrepair, which is generally two to four years with these banners. So we will have spots open up here and there, maybe maybe advertising when as they, as they fall off and we, maybe lots of fibers or something like that. But this is the last full open round for the foreseeable future. And again, I will post that on the Brookhaven Hometown Heroes page either tonight or tomorrow. And the application is available at Borough Hall. We're not open back up to the public yet. The application will be on the Facebook page, however, so. And that application period will be open. Mr. Gilroy, uh, I'm I'm completely forgetting when we we are going to leave that open. Was it March first?
I believe so, yeah. March first, sounds right.
All right, well, let's make it March first. We we can change it. So we're going to, we're going to leave that open for March first with the install probably being again, as as it was last year, mid April, if if all goes well. So that's that. Any questions?
Send me that information, though.
Saying
Send me that, send me that so I can put on the website.
Absolutely. Once I get it together, I'll send it to you as I, as I get it ready to uh to post on the Facebook page.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, all. Twenty twenty one will be better. I can't guarantee it, but I think it'll be better. And a quick COVID update. Looks like we unfortunately added a a death in the month of December. The total count in Brookhaven is three seventy nine, one hundred and twenty in the last thirty days. And that's thirty two percent of our total cases. It looks like it's slowed a little bit, although a hundred and twenty is still uh way too much for a borough of this size. Hopefully, we'll get those vaccines out and we'll start to control it. Don't hold your breath. It's going to be a few months. That's all I have. Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, ordinance committee update. Uh, everyone received the food truck ordinance in November. It is important that you all review it and get back to me your feedback, please. Um, we also need to discuss the daily permit fee for the food trucks. Uh, I would like to wrap this up by the end of um next month, if possible, just because, you know, it's going to be spring and warmer weather and people are going to want to bring in some food trucks. So we need to get this ordinance wrapped up. As of today, um, I'm still planning on having our ordinance committee meeting on the twenty first. And obviously, depending on what's going on with COVID in our building, um, that meeting may have to be canceled. So um, you know, I'll just keep the the group uh updated on that. I'd also like to say that the ordinance committee is a hardworking, rewarding committee that does require attending meetings, uh depending on what we are currently working on. And I'm asking for anyone who is interested in joining the ordinance committee to please contact me through our website, our Facebook page or the office. Please leave your name and number and I will uh get back with you. Um, again, uh, if you are interested in the ordinance committee, please reach out to me. Uh, rec board update. Uh, I would like to make a motion to accept Mike Johnson's resignation from the Recreation Board.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add on to that. On behalf of council and our residents, I would like to thank Mike for his service and his hard work on the Recreation Board. Um, there is a scheduled rec board meeting on January twenty eighth, but again, depending on what's going on, we may need to uh maybe hold it uh virtually using Zoom. You know, we'll talk with um Mr. Dykes about that. Um, and Tom, uh, if you would like to talk about upcoming rec board events and the positions that we need to fill on the Recreation Board and where we stand with that, uh, that would be appreciated.
You want it now or you want to do it during public discussion?
Whatever you want to do. I I maybe now would be since we're talking about rec board.
Okay.
Go ahead.
We have, I have four people so far who have who are interested in uh joining us in the rec board. Uh, the plan was to have them come to a rec board meeting and introduce themselves, talk about it, so the members can kind of get them together and then vote on who we'd like council to approve. Um, we do have uh two positions to fill uh right now, so we're looking for that. Plus, we're also looking for alternates. So everybody who wants to do join in will be able to join in uh in any way, shape or form. We're doing that. Um, the first proposed um activity is Easter egg hunt. That might be pushing it with the way the way COVID is going right now. So we'll have to see what's going with that. Um, after that, we're getting into baseball, which um baseball and softball, which I'll be talking with JR and Rob about those and see what they're doing. Um, haven't heard any more about them right right yet. So but um, it's pretty much where we're at right now.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Dykes.
Uh huh.
And let me add, I spoke to Mr. Dykes earlier today. Now, I believe you wanted to hold the the meeting in person, right? The record meeting in person for January?
If we can, because there'd be about fifteen to eighteen people, uh, which we can do in either council room or the multi or the uh the community room spread. Enough to do that. I just think it with introducing the people, it might be the best way of doing it.
Let us think.
We can decide that as we get a little closer.
Yeah, let us think about it between now and then. We have what, three, three weeks, three and a half weeks?
About that, yes.
We're we're looking at numbers. We're worried about another super spike after New Year.
I totally hear you.
So um, let us get back to it.
Thanks, Mr. Dykes. Um, so going back to um talking about the tech committee and the website, I'm going to be working with our website company to add our Ecode software. I have the link now. Um, I want to get the link on the website and have a page designated for it so that it looks pretty when residents go out there. They'll be easily able to find an ordinance that they're looking for. So this upcoming week, I'm going to be working with the website company to get that up there and um and add some additional information and I'll let everyone know when that work is completed. And lastly, um, for community news, as of now, Providence Animal Center will be here on May nineteenth for the chip vaccination clinic. And if that changes, I'll be sure to let everyone know. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Mr. Gilroy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report uh this month here, but I do have a question I want to follow up. I had a few uh questions from residents and I've seen on Facebook. Do we have an update on the uh delivery of the viral calendar?
Mr. Willard.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
We can, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, the borough calendar was mailed last week. We're at the mercy of the postal service right now.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know how else to to say it, but um it was mailed on like the twenty eighth. And uh, I'm not sure which postal post office it came out of, and I don't think it matters. It's once it gets to Chester, that's the problem.
Mm hmm.
So um, I don't, we're at the mercy of the, and now it's because it's bulk mail, I don't know what kind of priority they're giving bulk mail. So I mean, that, there's nothing, we're, at this point, there's not anything we can do to to speed it up.
Oh, that's good. Have to make sure we uh
Sorry about that, but I I just uh you know, it's if it, if we had, if it was the same postal service we had a couple of years ago, everybody would have had it by now.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Hey, John, will there be extra copies of the calendar in the borough office once the borough office is opened back up to the public?
They give us extra copies every year. I'm not sure how many they give us, but yes, there will be extra copies in here.
Okay.
And we're good, we're planning on putting them in the welcome packets, some of them, so we have them for the new people at least.
Perfect.
Great. Thank you. I do want to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year and let's uh, you know, uh keep on chugging along here and we'll make the best of it. Thank you, Mr. President. Amen. Thank you, sir. Mr. Pap.
Hi, Mr. President. I do not have any type of report tonight. My committees did not meet, but uh I do have a motion for appointments for the Planning Commission. On the Planning Commission, we need to, uh, we have a position open as the president. I'm looking to place a motion to reappoint uh Mr. Robert uh Curran's for a term to January of twenty twenty five.
Seconded, seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the second reappointment will be to a Joan Boyle, who's our planning secretary. Again, the reappointment will move her term to January of twenty twenty five.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that concludes myself and happy New Year to the borough residents.
Thank you, sir. But who's Carrie? Oh, you know what? While I'm at it, uh, Mr. Matthews, Chuck Matthews did get back to me. Uh, we also have to re-up the uh
Vacancy board.
Vacancy board uh seat,
Yeah.
which was held by Mr. Matthews. He he uh actually replied to my question a few minutes ago, so.
I know.
Mute yourselves. I'll mute you.
Did you need something?
Starting twenty one, twenty twenty one off, add Mr. Wiki. So I need a motion to appoint Chuck Matthews as the uh vacancy board.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
That's fine.
We have a motion and a second and another mute. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Have you muted or no?
It says mute.
Hey, hey, odd couple. Let let me mute you. Stop touching your thing. There, now you're muted. Don't touch it. Then you'll be fine, all right? Okay, for the technologically challenged in the next room. Uh, Mrs. Heller.
Hey, I have a quick report. Um, the technology committee did not meet in December, but our next meeting is scheduled for uh Thursday, January fourteenth at seven PM. Uh, Donna already talked about the website, the Ecode. For emergency management, Mayor Leslie declared a snow emergency on twelve sixteen at seventeen hundred to twelve seventeen at seventeen hundred. I want to thank Public Works, Steve Schultz, the Police Department, and the Fire Department to making sure that everyone stayed safe during that snowstorm. We did have a few residents on the seventeenth of December that were temporarily without power, but the families were able to find lodging with family. We also had the flooding and the horrible winds on Thursday, Christmas Eve, twelve twenty-four. We had a disabled vehicle that was stuck on Creek Road during that flood. I want to thank Officer Subers and Mr. Heller for removing a downed tree at Madison and Grant on Christmas Day. Um,
That was all me, actually. Subers supervised.
I find that hard to believe, but okay. Um, I also, we also had on the twenty-sixth of December, we had residents that were experiencing power outages again. We had one particular couple that refused to leave their home, so I want to personally thank Chief Montella, Mayor Leslie, and Steve Schultz for providing wellness checks and charging the couple's phone until their power was restored. And I want to say great police work by the two officers involved in the robbery at Walgreens on twelve twenty-nine, and Happy New Year to everyone. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Miss Wiki.
Thank you. We do have bills to pay this month, and I'm gonna make a motion that we do pay them, and I'll explain. It's general fund, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-four cents, and its road fund, four thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Trash fund is four hundred and fifty dollars for a total of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-six cents. So I'm making a motion to pay those bills for January.
We have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, I do have one other matter to bring up. Since this is an election year, every four years, the Borough has to adopt a salary for the tax collector who was elected this year and the calendar year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five. So the amount is nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, and we need to make a motion for that so that whoever files the paperwork to be elected for that position, they know, they have to know by state law what the amount of money is they're gonna receive for the next four years, because it's a set fee. You do not get an increase for those four years. That's the way the law's written. So I just wanted to make the motion so we could, whoever gets appointed, it's nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars for the calendar year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five. So I'll make the motion.
Janice, what is, I'm sorry, I do have a question. Is that an increase from the previous years, Janice?
Yes, it was, it was eighteen thousand, nine hundred for the last four years.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It's a small increase.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All of council seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any, any, any further questions?
No, that's all I have.
Motion carries. Nothing else, Kansas?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Mr. Vas, Mr. Vaskus?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to twenty twenty-one. Hopefully a better year than last year. We can all hope for. I'll first start with the zoning hearing board has a, Mr. Mara's term is expired at the end of this month. I'd like to reappoint Mr. Paul Mara for a five-year term. Looking to get a motion, or a motion for that.
Who's taking the motion?
I'll second.
Who's taking the motion?
I'll take the motion.
Mrs. Fuchs seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
I also have two alternate positions open in the zoning hearing board and one full-time member. We are still looking to try and replace, you do have to be a Brookhaven resident to be on the zoning hearing board. So if anybody's interested in participating in what happens in their community for future development, when things come for variances and whatnot, please contact me. Next, I would like to say a small piece for Mr. Harold Hampton. Forty years of service for the Borough. Mr. Hampton has been an encyclopedia knowledge when it comes to the zoning code and what needs to be done. He will be greatly missed, and it has not been easy to find somebody to replace him. So I tip my hat to Mr. Hampton. Thank you for everything you've done for us, and thank you for taking me under your wing and showing me what, you know, all, all that you do, all that you've done and what I need to look for while I'm doing my part as a council member. That is all I have for zoning, the zoning hearing board. Next, I move on to Public Works. For the month of December, we have three sewer backups. One at forty-one oh five Chandler. The issue was on the homeowner. The second one was at thirty-four twenty-eight Washington Avenue. Again, the issue was with the homeowner. And the third one is, was at three oh six Edwards. Again, the issue was with the homeowner, not on the Borough. Public Works investigated a smell at the sewer treatment plant. The wind direction was noted. And the smell did not appear to be coming from the sewer treatment plant itself. The cause of the smell is unknown at this time. A video inspection was done at the sanitary sewer line on thirty-four, thirty-five Victor. There's a small stream of water entering the sanitary sewer main. We had got Mr. Catania involved, our plumbing inspector, Chester Water Authority and John Reliable's Plumbing to remediate this issue. There was also a water issue at Arlington and Upland Road. There was two emergency callouts for salt. The issue was created by a sump pump from a vacant home, causing the area to ice up. Also, the Public Works team assisted the sewer treatment plant operator with pumps and ladders during a pump inspection that required a second hand. In general, for twenty twenty, the leaf, or twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty leaf collection is complete. We collected three hundred and twenty-five yards of leaves, which were disposed of at Lynn Villa, which is our new agreement instead of going to the old facility at Incinerator Road. So these, it'll be reused to help grow crops and whatever else Lynn Villa sees fit, which I think is a lot better option than what we were doing before. We had two down trees that were removed. Public Works assisted the Police Department with some road barricades for flooding down on Creek Road. Also, the Public Works team assisted code enforcement with some road barricades as well on Edgemont Avenue after a traffic accident with some structural damage. As Terry mentioned, the Public Works team also assisted with and repaired some hero banners that had fell down, and I believe two were put back up.
Sure, we have, we have seventeen down right now, actually. It's been a bad month.
The, the wind's not helping in the.
No, we'll, we'll take care of that. We have someone on quarantine down there, so it's gonna be a while before they go back up.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
How much do they cost per banner to replace the actual banner?
Seventy-eight dollars. Seventy-eight dollars per banner.
Isn't it the brackets that caused the most issue?
It was, in my opinion, a poor install from the first couple of rounds. Or I should say, lack of experience. The, the third round install was done by by Riley's, who sells us the banners and produces the banners. It's the way they band them. Each, each bracket requires three bands on it. One, for a total of six bands. They, they were, they were putting two bands on some and four on others, and not one of them was installed really the right way. And it wasn't laziness or shortcuts. It was, they just honestly didn't know.
Lack of experience?
Sure, and it doesn't help with some of the windstorms we've had. They don't do well on some of the older poles, too, because they're also screwed in. Pretty soon, Public Works will be taking that over completely.
Yes, and then we can definitely handle that a lot better than what the previous installers had.
Yeah. We're gonna save a lot of money.
Um, all right, back to Public Works. Thirty-two PA one call tickets were answered. The year-to-date total for twenty twenty is six hundred and sixty-five PA one calls. There was a snow and salt event the past couple of days. There's three of them for the year of twenty twenty, and salting events. The total usage of road salt is fifty-three tons. The, our year-to-date total is sixty-three tons used in twenty twenty. We have no accidents to report in December, as Mr. Heller had mentioned. We do have one out on quarantine right now. Hopefully, he stays healthy and a speedy recovery to him. And just a reminder, the leaf collection is finished. And now, if you are done with your Christmas tree, please feel free to put it on the curb. The Public Works team will come around and pick it up during the month of January.
Please take the lights off.
Preferably.
Except for me. We're gonna throw it out there whole, as is.
Yes. I also wanted to mention what Donna and Sherry talked about with the e-code. This is a, just to remind some residents that this is a searchable engine for everything code zoning related. Everything that's in our hard books with hard copies at the Borough. You are able to now search online, and this will just make things ten times easier. You don't, you don't even need to call the Borough anymore. You're just, you're gonna be able to go to the website. There's a search bar. Type in anything. Say you wanna see garages. Type in the word garage. Everything related with garages is gonna pop up for the resident of you. Very easy, carefree, Google-esque way to solve the the problem with getting proper distances or what have you for code and zoning. And that would be the end of my report.
A message from Mr. Hampton in the chat. He's sitting with his daughter. He says, "You're welcome, Hector, and thank you for all the kind words."
Thank you, Harold.
I'm sure he hears you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Catania?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year to everybody. I wrote a report. There's only a couple of things I want to mention. The first one is early or last month, the Borough received a letter from, I guess it was Aqua slash Del Cora, asking to approve a five thirty-seven plan revision by the middle of January fifteenth, which is impossible for us. So I think what we'll do is we'll put that on the agenda, discuss that at our workshop meeting for further action at a later date. The other thing is, at the sewage treatment plant, I think you're all aware, I've been having problems with, with pumps clogging for quite some time. NDI had, had hired or consulted with Keystone Engineering to prepare plans and get a permit from the state to install a mechanical screen which remove the rags at, at where the sewage enters the treatment plant. That's basically ready to go at this point. We received a permit from, from the state. I'm gonna ask council to consider authorizing that bid to obtain and install that mechanical screen, either through public bidding process or through the Co-Stars program.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions?
Now, I just wanted to add that this screen's really gonna help us with our our pump issue we're having down there. It's really been a hassle trying to keep everything up and running. We do have a spare pump there, and it's been used quite heavily, unfortunately, with the clogging of the other pumps. And I leave it to you, Charles.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leslie?
Just a couple of things here. Down at five thirty-two West Brookhaven Road to Stone Hill, the fire company's been down there several times with the fire alarm, and it's been discovered that one of the residents is disconnecting the fire alarms as it's going off and then vandalizing them, so I'm working with the management down there to get that problem resolved. Over at forty-five oh one, I reached out to the property owner over there to maybe remove those boring sample drums that are piled up behind there at the Swiss Farms. About fifteen or eighteen of them boring samples in the drums. Just wanna get them out of there. Don't look, it doesn't look nice. A couple of residents reached out to me over on Rick Circle about the cut through. I'm gonna go up there and put a lock on that, so the fire company's gotta get through behind those. They can just cut the lock. We'll put a new lock on there. Pep Boys is still pending with those tires and oil. And that'll be the end of my report there, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
All be safe, stay healthy.
The Board of Health, Mr. Gavin will be attending meetings in the future once he gets his, gets up to speed. Brings us to the second public discussion session. Is there anyone for public discussion?
Mr. Heller?
Name and address.
Yes. Question, I guess either from Mr. Catania or Mr. Wills. The dedicated property going on Arlington at the, the three fifteen Brookhaven. I know you talked about grading it. Are they also doing like demarcation as far as like either trees or a small fence? So the property owners there know what's their property and what's the Borough property? Is that part of what they have to provide, or does the Borough need to provide that?
Believe that, I didn't mean to cut you off. I, I believe that we agreed last year that we were gonna put up a western rail fence, did we not, or is that me?
I thought that. Doing something, but I thought, I thought it was the developer that had to put the demarcation in.
No.
He said in the property corners, he said in the property corners.
At the property corners, yeah.
He said in the property corners, we applied for a PICO Green Region grant to install the fence and some landscaping on that piece of ground.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's, what's, what's the status of the grid?
I don't, I don't think they announced that until the spring.
Oh, okay.
I think so.
I know there was some debate. A few of us were opposed to having a fence there at all, if you recall. I know I was.
Which is why I was wondering what we're doing.
I honestly don't see the need for it. We can talk when we get there.
I'm just thinking, because I know a couple of the neighbors wanna put fences up. The two on Brookhaven Road both wanna put fences up, so I just wanna make sure that they, it doesn't go into Borough property.
But I know, usually before you wanna put up a fence, Harold would recommend they get surveyed, so they get a proper landline. So that, that would definitely be the way to go.
And then, along with that, with the property line was, there was a question about the property line on three eleven, I think it is. Did that get straightened out?
That's, that's the same answer. The developers is, has to get all those property corner stuff and all the lots prior to final escrow release. I know he has them scheduled. I don't believe it's, it's been done as of yet.
That is not, because a couple of the neighbors were asking questions. That was all. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for public discussion?
Just if I could add, Mr. President, I believe there's any requirement under the land development agreement that the Borough signed with the developer requiring the developer to install a fence around the perimeter, perimeter of the property. And then second, with regard to neighbors putting up fences, I'll have to check, but I believe the Borough may have a fence ordinance that requires that a permit be issued before a neighbor or a property owner can simply erect the fence. And generally, one of the requirements before that we erect the fences, that we have, you know, drawings as to where the proposed fence is gonna be erected, so we make sure that there is not a boundary dispute with the adjacent neighbor. Sometimes that's, that's always an issue, is when somebody simply on their own initiative says, "I'm gonna put a fence up", and then we find that later that the fence is an encroachment. And then we find that later that the fence is an encroachment when the neighbors. And that becomes an issue of some dispute with your neighbor. So that's generally the argument of why we'd like to get a permit before somebody simply puts up a fence.
Right. I did tell the neighbors on Brookhaven Road they need to check to the borough first before they put fences up.
And that would, that would be one of the new job tasks of our new zoning officer.
Somebody's got to train him.
Just a point of thinking is he would take a look at those, you know, drawings or plans as to where the proposed fence is going to be erected to make sure that it's proper before a permit is issued and authorization is given to the property owner put up the fence.
I think we're worrying a little too much about it. I don't think it's going to be an issue there. What, what size is the, the parcel that we're getting? Quarter acre?
The same size as the other lots.
Is it?
It's lot number eight.
All right. Thank you.
Eleven thousand square feet.
Okay.
I really have to say, when this development came in, we had a very lengthy discussion among council members and we agreed that it was going to be boxwoods around the perimeter so that the neighbors could not encroach on our property. There'll be shade trees. There'll be some azaleas. There'll be a nice bench for people to be able to walk on Arlington and stop by if they need to rest. And it's our passive recreation. It's, we're trying to do passive recreation. And the grant from Pico, as Mr. Catania said, is to pay for, is going to pay for some of it. And that's what we're trying to do. It's Gary, when he was here, he and I had many lengthy discussions about passive recreation. And we tried to find little spots where we could actually put it.
Sure. Council, council discussed this in a public meeting, I, I recall. Some time ago, when NDI was, was the engineer and the, and the I suggested defense and council was generally opposed to that. I don't remember anything of boxwoods, but.
Well, that was, Jim LaPera said boxwoods would be appealing and not really a burden to anybody, but it would keep our property from being encroached. That's, that was our concern.
Well, the property, the property. Sure, the property is owned by the residents, so what are they encroaching? Their neighbors.
The property is owned by us. It's not owned by the residents.
If it's owned by us, it's owned by the residents. That's my point. It's for their use. It's packed by. Right.
Encroaching on our property.
All right.
Mr. Heller, I did have one other question real quick that just came up. Did anyone get a chance to look at the, the corner of Brookhaven and Mount Vernon?
Um, I drove.
The fencing and those big bushes.
Tom, I drove there and I don't mean to disagree with you, but I completely disagree with you. I, I.
If you stop, if, if you stop at the correct location, which is where the white line is, not the, not the walking path, the correct line, you cannot see through that big bush.
I just don't think it, I don't think it's enough to, the safety issue and something where we'd want to irritate a resident. I, I pulled up. I, I turned left. I came back around and turned right. Uh, that's just me though. I'm just one person, but, um.
Just a question because I, I mean, I know if you, if, correct me if I'm wrong, our former police officers, there's a white line, which is at the stop sign, which is where you are supposed to stop.
Sure.
And then there's, and then there's a crosswalk. You're not supposed to encroach into the crosswalk when you're waiting to, looking for traffic.
I think the problem existed before they made the, the change to the fence and the landscape. From.
Oh, there was a problem there before, but it's, I think it's just the, the bushes that are there, I think, are exacerbating the problem with people coming out of that, that area.
Okay, let's have a few more members of council drive their, drive themselves over there and take a look at it.
It's, it's definitely a big intersection. Uh, you know, I, I can definitely agree with that. It, it's, you know, it's one of the more popular ones we have accidents on, especially on this side of town.
The most of any, I believe, yeah. I believe. Uh, but I, I don't, I can't, I don't, I can't say that that property, that landscaping and fences is, is the cause.
It's, it's not so much the fencing as it is the bushes. There's one huge mound bush in the middle of it. And then there's two like upright cedars that are going towards Edgemont Avenue that stick up closer to the road.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, a couple more members of council should drive over there and take a look at it. You're, you're going on Mount Vernon towards Brookhaven Road. Uh, the property's on the right at Brookhaven Road and Mount Vernon. Uh, go take a look at it. We'll discuss it via email.
Thank you.
All right, then I'll speak at once. I'm going to take that as a yes. Mrs. Fuchs will head over there right now after the meeting. So, Tom, we will look at it again. I didn't mean to get into a heated debate. I just, I just politely disagree. Anything else, sir?
Not for I. Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Anyone else? Anyone else for public discussion? Going once, going twice, public discussion is closed. Anyone from council? Any of our officials? Anything else? Janice, are you trying to unmute? I don't know what you're doing. Unmute. Yes, it is stupid. Go ahead.
It is stupid.
Janice, did you have another point?
I don't have any points. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn or somebody else.
All right, someone's cranky. So Mrs. Soiki has made the motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Happy New Year, all.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.